Good evening and welcome everybody to City Council Meeting tonight, April 3rd. It is an incredibly blustery day out there today, isn't it? All of that dust in the air.
I tell people the sand dunes are moving to Fremont County. It's gonna be a new attraction.
It literally feels that way right now, yeah. That's a good way to put it. Let's go ahead and do a roll call, please. Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Smith. Here. We're gonna have our Pledge of Allegiance now, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any citizens' requests to speak to council if they're not already on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, it's now time for council member announcements. Any council member announcements? Emily Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. A couple of things briefly. The next regular meeting of the city's Energy Advisory Committee is next Monday, the 10th, at 10:00 a.m. in the back of this same room here. We're going to have a speaker, a presentation from the Deputy Director of the Office of the Utility Consumer Advocate, one of the state agencies involved with regulating utilities. I heard him speak online, presenting to a legislative committee, and I think he'll have some interesting perspective to provide to us since we're served by an investor-owned utility. And that meeting, of course, is open to the public in person or by Zoom. I also wanted to mention that in regard to the Cotter Superfund site, that I saw just this afternoon in my email, that there has been a compliance order issued as of the end of last week. And this is just in regard to the state's radioactive materials license. And the state is stepping through a legal process because the owner of the property, C.L.L., is out of compliance with the radioactive materials license. And so the state is already taking action to cash in a bond or bonds. It's not going to be anywhere near enough money to do what needs to be done out there long-term. But it's over $22 million that the state is going after, bonds that the company had to put up. So just wanted to mention that. We do have our next Community Advisory Group meeting on April 18th. It's going to be an in-person meeting. I'm not sure yet of location. It might be at the Abbey or might be at the PCC campus. Still waiting to hear about that. But 4:00 on the 18th, if you're interested. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a couple of other meetings, city meetings, coming up. Wednesday, we have an Urban Renewal Authority meeting. That'll be at 5:00 here in these chambers. And then we also have a General Government meeting. That is, that's Wednesday, April 5th, both of them at 6:00 p.m. here in these chambers. And on the U.R.A., we're going to be talking about a Building Systems Grant. And under the General Government, we're going to talk about the US-50 Pedestrian Crossing Project Update. This has been something that's been in the works for quite a number of years, and we're getting ready to move into a construction phase. And also, there's been a suggestion that we have a Trails Committee to look at Red Canyon Park and perhaps put something together like that. And so we'll be having those discussions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, and Wednesday is KRLN.
Yes.
And if anybody wants to jump in on this one, I will be there. And it'll be Wednesday morning at 8:30. And if you're interested, let me know, so I can know how much I have to prepare. Thank you.
It's always nice to have a partner.
It is.
On the radio, yes. Excellent. Any other announcements from council? All right, then we'll move ahead with our Administrator's Report. Oh, actually, I take that back. We have a very important recognition and proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Before we read the proclamation, I do see we have some people in the audience. Randi, I see you're here. Did Rosalyn have to step out for a minute?
She was here for something else.
Oh, she was here for something else? Okay, well, call in up, Randi, if you'd like to address council.
Um, for her.
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a little direction? Just introduce myself and tell you what we do?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, so please.
Okay. My name is Randi Hayden, and I am the Outreach and Community Resources Coordinator for Family Crisis Services. And we are a nonprofit agency for domestic violence and sexual assault victims. Some of our services, we have a 24-hour hotline, we have a shelter, we have counseling, support groups, et cetera. And all of our services are free and confidential. And April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and it just calls attention to the fact that sexual assault is widespread, and it affects all of our communities, including ours. And I'll just give you a couple of statistics. Every 68 seconds in the United States, somebody is sexually assaulted. And every nine minutes, that victim is a child. And out of every thousand perpetrators, only 25 get any jail or prison time.
Can you tell us more about what's happening locally here at the Family Crisis Services? And how are our people are doing in Fremont County?
Like, as far as our services?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, we have a lot, like I said, we have our services that are already in place, and we have a couple of things that we're working on new. And that is to bring pets into shelter, because that's a big hindrance when somebody wants to get out of a domestic violence relationship especially. They don't want to leave their animals or their abuser has threatened their animals. So we're working on that. And then we're also working on community awareness and basically letting people know the statistics and that we're here. We're kind of finding that some people don't know that we're here. So that's something that we're doing, too. We have an event at the end of the month called Take Back the Night on April 27th at 5:00. And in Depot Park on the corner of 9th and 50. And that's basically for raising awareness and honoring our survivors.
On average, how many clients do you usually have?
I actually don't think that I can say that due to confidentiality.
Okay, that's okay. We're going to read the proclamation, and if you want to, would you like to have a picture together with council? We can post it on social media and help promote Family Crisis Services.
Thank you.
So what we usually do is we all take turns. Amy, if you want to start first, we'll each take a section and work our way down.
Proclamation. Whereas April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in the city of Canyon City, and...
Whereas every day, women, men, and children across Colorado suffer the pain and trauma of sexual assault upon survivors in our communities, and...
Whereas. Whereas the crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars, and...
Whereas during National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, expanding support for victims, and strengthening our response, and...
Whereas sexual violence affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances, and whereas...
Whereas as a community, we share the responsibility for protecting each other from sexual assault, supporting victims when it does occur, and bringing perpetrators to justice, and...
Whereas at every, sorry, at every level, we must work to provide necessary resources to victims of every circumstance, including medical attention, mental health services, relocation, and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process, and...
Whereas the city of Canyon City can come together to increase awareness about sexual violence, decrease its frequency, hold offenders accountable, support victims, and heal lives.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the month of April 2023 is hereby designated as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Canyon City, and hereby urge the community to work together to educate themselves about sexual violence prevention, to support survivors, and speak out against harmful attitudes and actions dated this third day of April 2023.
I thank you for raising awareness for sexual assault in Fremont County. And we're gonna come down and join you up front for a picture. If there's anyone else that's with your organization that'd like to join us.
No, just me, thanks.
Okay. Okay. There we go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Absolutely. Do you want to shake your hand?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Wow, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just bite my tongue.
You want some popcorn?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Set this out.
All right, Ryan, we are ready for the Administrator's Report.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council Meeting on March 20th, the Vision Committee Meeting on March 22nd, and the special meeting, which was Energy Committee, on March 13th. 7B, awards bid 2523 Stormwater Facilities Maintenance to Mid-Colorado Construction and in Mountain not to exceed $120,000. 7C, authorizes city vehicles to be declared surplus and disposed of according to city's purchasing policy. And 7D is to receive and file a list of bills and cash disbursements. We're also asking that item 9A is removed from the agenda tonight. The Farmers Market Co-op has asked for more time, and that will probably come back to City Council for consideration in May.
Are there any questions for Ryan about the consent agenda or agenda? No? If not, I would like to entertain a motion, including the removal of item 9.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make an motion that we approve the agenda as written with the, the consent agenda as written, and the agenda with the removal of item 9A.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote? Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much, council. Thank you, staff. I believe we really are ready for the Administrator's Report.
Must be. I've got one item that's not on the Administrator's Report that I do want to talk about. We've got 311 North Fourth. It's an old burnt-out house in the neighborhood right here back behind downtown. The city took possession of that property several months ago last year. And we've been working with several state and federal agencies to, for a process to remove that burned-out structure. We are very close to that. We are just waiting for the sign-off from CDPHE. Contractor's ready to go. We've been working through our Brownfield Grant and our consultant, Stan Tech, to help work through this process, because there are some materials in there that are considered hazardous that need to be removed. So that, that project, hopefully, by the end of this month, that, that structure will be gone. Within the city's Administrator's Reports, do want to call attention to a draft letter that was put in here. This letter is being presented by Colorado Municipal League. If you, as individual council members, have not already signed on, you know, please consider that. This is in regards to Senate Bill 23-213 regarding density and states, what the state is considering state levels of concern regarding zoning. And I'm actually gonna pass it over to Corey to talk a little bit about this. I know he's on one of the committees, and he's very passionate about this topic.
And if I could, if I could, you said we should sign on. The, what, how are we supposed to do that?
I can send you a link to the CML website where you can, you can do that.
And they do have a three-minute limit, which is very strict.
And that's for oral testimony?
Yes.
So I do have a bias, and so I will, I will put that out right now, that my bias is that I think you all, as the level of government closest to the folks in Canyon City, are the best decision-makers for decisions relating to the housing needs in the city of Canyon City. Senate Bill 213 would eliminate all of that. It would mandate ADUs. It would mandate not requiring parking for residential uses. It would also mandate requiring what they refer to as middle housing. And so it would effectively, at the state level, eliminate single-family residential zoning as we know it. And make all the decisions at the state level on zoning, which is a matter that is traditionally, under our form of government, but a matter of what's called a matter of local concern. The state has characterized this as a quote-unquote "housing crisis," trying to make it not a matter of statewide concern, or not a matter of local concern. But call it whatever you want. If you are dictating what density is within the city of Canyon City, it is taking away one of the true matters of local concern. So I have been working with the Colorado Municipal League on one of their working groups in terms of, you know, figuring out if there is a way to amend this, to make it acceptable, to frankly, do everything I can to get a no vote. The governor, as I understand it, chose not to partner with local governments, and in fact, released this without showing many local governments, and certainly showing CML the bill before it was introduced. I think it's frankly tactics and strategy. It is, at this point, a bill that is, again, supported by the governor, supported by Democrats in both the House and the Senate. To my knowledge, it does not have support from the other side of the aisle, so at this point, it is truly partisan. It'd be nice if there was a way to get some bipartisan solution that took out the mandates against local governments. Again, you hear my bias. But this is a, a matter where local governments are being preempted on land use authority, which is our, one of our traditional areas of local concern. The testimony on Senate Bill 213, as I understand it, is scheduled either for Wednesday or Thursday of this week. There is another bill, House Bill 1255, that would seek to invalidate growth caps at the local level. Again, geared towards taking away traditional areas where local governments can legislate. And in fact, in the case of growth caps, it has traditionally initiated measures from the citizens. So the examples that have been given are in both Lakewood and in Golden. And certainly in Lakewood, it was a citizen-initiated matter that this, at the state level, would seek to invalidate. So it is, it is an attack on, on, again, areas that the local government have, have traditionally legislated because they're the ones that understand the housing needs of the folks in their community.
Well, it not only takes away the rights of the municipalities to make those decisions for our unique circumstances, because urban, what looks like an urban is not the same as what it's gonna look like for Canyon City. But it also takes away the right and the voice of the people themselves, because they will no longer have an opportunity to voice what they want or do not want to see in their very own community anymore. And you're not the only one that has a lot of deep biases about this, as CML really tried really hard to have a voice in developing this legislation, and they were absolutely shut down. And so that's just an example of how they're shutting down voices all around. And that Canyon City, I think all local municipalities are keenly aware of what our needs are, for desperate need for housing for our constituents. And we are doing everything we can possibly to take care of those concerns. I'd also like to say that Canyon City has done a lot of those things already on our own in a way that our people have been able to have a voice in how that would look.
And I guess the one other thing I would add, because there's a lot of noise about this, is that there is absolutely nothing in the legislation related to affordability or attainability. This is about density. And so to the extent you hear folks saying there's a need for affordable housing and attainable housing, that is, I suspect, very true. This bill does nothing to address that.
It does nothing to address it. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the, Corey, I would say, the, what you characterize as bias, I would characterize as wisdom. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, and thanks for the information and comments. I have a comment and kind of a question, although I think it's already been addressed to some degree. I may be the only person in the room who remembers former Governor Lamb's human settlement policies of the 1970s. If you don't know about that, look it up. It was another attempt, very long time ago, by a state official to try to impose control over how local governments determine development, where it occurs and how it occurs. And it, this should not be a partisan issue. And if it's working out that way in the legislature, that's unfortunate. It's not a partisan issue. It's, as folks have already said, it's the ability of local government to best figure out how to address the needs that we can see, as well as anyone else around the state can see. My question was going to be more general about whether, Corey, you feel, or Ryan, or anyone, that this might lead to more of this kind of state-level look at what are traditionally local decisions. You mentioned a House bill that's already in the works, so it sounds like this, if, if at least one of these goes through, we could see a lot more of this kind of legislation, which is really unfortunate.
That, that would be the concern, absolutely.
Yeah, and as it relates to land use, it certainly appears the answer is yes. And I would also venture to say that if the bill stays in anything close to its current form, I would suggest it is likely there will be a broad-based coalition that would challenge it.
Well, from what I understand, there's a, there are some investors that are heavily funding this legislation. And so there, there is a battle.
Interestingly, the development community, which suggests it's not about affordable and attainable housing, but, but lining the pockets of developers.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Worthington, and then Schmisher.
Thank you. In our hopes, I'm definitely in agreement with everybody that's spoken already as far as my bias. And having been very much involved in an organization of Southern Colorado called Action 22, which is the 22 counties in Southern Colorado, they very much are behind CML and the rest of us in our thoughts on this. And so they usually have a fairly strong voice up at the Capitol also, so I admire their stance and their fighting this also.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, my question was related to the opposition letter. I knew you had mentioned that we can sign onto it as individuals. Is there also an opportunity to sign a letter as the city of Canyon City?
Yeah, we, we were hoping to bring something to this meeting. You know, Corey and I spoke about it. Because the legislation is kind of in flux and changing, we wanted to wait for something a little bit more concrete. And we, we can bring that either as a letter or a resolution.
And that would be something that we would all vote on collectively.
Yeah.
When I went to, when I attended this seminar on it, it also suggested giving examples, custom examples of what we are doing as communities to help create affordable housing. And so I have sent some of those to you, Ryan, like, we, we have allowed ADUs. Wouldn't, we had a developer come in, we asked, you know, what something can do to make this more affordable for you? They said, ease back on the parking requirements. So we eased back on parking requirements. We also got a grant from DOLA and completely revamped our, our processes and our development and started from scratch, so it's streamlined and easy for developers and for our staff and to make it as easy as we can. So we, we want affordable housing, and we're doing things that can hopefully actually make affordable housing. Having over-heavy legislation with requirement for extra spending for more studies, and also water rights issues as well, that's not gonna help us get affordable housing. Councilmember Stein.
I'm just wondering, Ryan, or council, I haven't had a chance to really read it myself, but I was just wondering. I highly doubt that there's funding along with this legislation for them to do this. This is, this is just be a huge, very expensive process to do everything from the top down, and they don't have an infrastructure in place that I can see.
The mechanism for the mandates under the current bill is DOLA. DOLA would be the, in my view, the epitome of big government. It would be the government agency. It would be transformed into a totally different type of agency than it is today.
Yeah, transformed is a good word for it, because right now, our, the local municipalities, it's a partnership with DOLA. We, we have a lot of good working, you know, good working relationship with our regional managers and see them as a resource. But you're, you're, this legislation would essentially turn them into an enforcement agency.
Without checks and balances.
But you, you have DOLA in place already, but are there funds earmarked for DOLA to do this as part of that legislation?
There would be, and frankly, the, I mean, this is where it becomes partisan. Because at least as of now, the, the deck is stacked, if you will, with, on a partisan level, that's gonna make fighting this difficult.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Thank you. I'm just concerned, I have a concern, and, and so perhaps you can, you can help me with it. But my concern is, is I would hate for us to lose, as a council, the ability to be able to send in a letter. And the, I, is there some way that we can sign an interim letter that, that if they act very quickly up there, we can get something before them? The, and so I, that's my question. I'm just concerned about that, that seeing how things have gone up there so far in Denver, that a lot of times, I think that to avoid a lot of controversy, they act very quickly. And so that's my concern.
CML has developed a form resolution. You could certainly make a motion to approve the form of municipal resolution. We could then get the mayor's signature on that, certainly.
And we could add in, you know, some of those talking points that the mayor mentioned earlier about things that we've already done as a city, trying to create affordable.
I'm not speaking for all of council, but I would, I would like to see, to support the mayor, to have individual council members who are willing to sign it also.
And one way to make a resolution like that look even more like it has, has the support is, the mayor typically is the one that signs a council resolution. We could make it so that each and every one of you signs it. Have a signature block on a form of council resolution that has all of the council members signing.
I think so, and we need to make sure that we, it's not, doesn't only, doesn't only go to Governor Polis, but it goes to our legislatures and representatives as well. Yeah. All right, so let's, yeah, let's get that letter rolling.
So I would suggest a motion to do so.
So the, would we, do we need to specify the, any contents in the letter, or what, it can just be a general motion to adopt whatever CML proposes?
I would recommend the motion to approve the form of CML resolution with the specifics of Canyon City, to be signed by all council members, in addition to the mayor.
Thank you. And I do make that motion, Madam Mayor, that we prepare such a, such a resolution with, and I would suggest that, that perhaps we poll council... signature block for someone that, that did not want to sign it, uh, as a, as a choice, and, you know, perhaps have that be, as a, as a blank or something. That would not be appropriate, I think. So, that's my motion.
A second. I have the, the proposed resolution from CML here, if you'd like me to read it.
Wasn't it in our...
Yeah.
Second of the motion, do we have that?
We do have a second. We do have an example letter that you put in the, the binder.
Yeah, there's the example letter, but this is the actual resolution that...
Oh, okay, sure.
Pardon me. Whereas for a century, the state of Colorado has committed both in statute and in the state constitution to the local control of land use planning and zoning because of local governments are closest to the land and to the people that occupy it. Whereas zoning and land use cannot be viewed separately from the impacts of proposed uses of land on surrounding properties and a community as a whole, including the ability to ensure adequate water and utilities, to provide enough public safety services, schools, and recreational services, to make sure that sufficient and safe infrastructure is available to handle increased populations or more intense uses, to align development with the community's economic goals, to prevent displacement of existing people, to preserve important historical sites, and to protect open space and the environment in general. Whereas Senate Bill 23-213 would place statewide mandates on hyper-local land use matters and substitute the judgment of legislators and state regulators who lack the understanding needed to make the right decisions for our community. Whereas Senate Bill 23-213 will undermine long-range planning efforts and will severely limit our ability to maintain reasonable zoning regulations to ensure a high quality of life and sound economic environment for our current and future residents, workers, and business owners. Whereas Senate Bill 23-213 silences the voices of our residents by taking away the right to be heard at public hearings on zoning matters, or to use their constitutional right of initiative or referendum to address zoning and land use matters. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Canyon City, uh, I'm sorry, by the city council of the city of Canyon City, that it is the position of the city of Canyon City that municipalities are best suited to determine appropriate zoning laws for their communities, and that collaboration and cooperation, not top-down statewide mandates and giveaways to special interests, are the solution to Colorado's affordable housing problems. And then, number two, the city of Canyon City opposes Senate Bill 23-213 and strongly urges its legislators to vote no on this unprecedented and irresponsible preemption.
Awesome.
Councilmember Tracy.
Yeah, I, I like the wording of that. I, I, I think that would be good to do if there's, um, unanimous or nearly unanimous agreement to do that. We might want to think, I think someone mentioned about where all this should be sent, and we might want to consider, uh, not just sending to our own elected officials here, our own legislators, but perhaps to, uh, leadership in both the state senate and state house and the governor's office, maybe a press release too, because I, there are, that's why I said before, it should not be a partisan issue. There are people of both parties who represent different parts of rural Colorado, and I, and, and small towns and small cities in rural Colorado, and I would think there would be agreement if folks in one party felt like stepping out and saying, you know, this really doesn't work for our area either, so, just some thoughts on that.
And to everybody, that, all of the representatives that are on the committee, considering it in the first place, they all need to receive this as well. So, there was a motion and a second to prepare this resolution with some Ca- Canyon City custom additions. Councilmember Schmisher.
Yes, um, I'm also in, in support of it. I'm just wondering, will we have an opportunity to review those additions before we're asked to sign it?
I was thinking maybe if it came to Wednesday's meeting, we'd have time to post this publicly.
Certainly could, but it might be too late, because I think, right now, the, uh, it is scheduled for Wednesday.
Oh.
Let's, let's go with what we've got.
Yeah.
Could it send out, so it needs to be sent out and distributed tomorrow.
We can do that.
Or have everybody stop by City Hall at one point tomorrow.
Oh, you can sign digitally on our, um, iPads. We can submit...
But I have to send one, I'll, I'll figure it out to get it to go from one to the next, to the next, to the next, and have you sign?
And you can have multiple pages that, I mean, that is just, if you need to.
Okay. So, there has been a motion and a second. I think there are also, as far as discussion, will be more opportunities to send more letters. That might be more finely tuned as it moves on. Al, call vote?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, council, and thank you, staff, and Cory, for helping us expedite this very important topic. Also, maybe send out, we should send out a link so we all can sign up who wish to testify in person or online.
Or at least all the mayors throughout the state should.
I know, I'm signing up. I am signing up, but I think the more, the better. CML is really like, this is all hands-on deck, everybody needs to get out there.
Yeah, the executive director of CML sent out an email earlier today. I forwarded that to all of council, so you guys have that in your inbox.
Okay. Um, any more discussion from the administrator's report or questions for Ryan? Well, we have a really short agenda tonight, and, which is good, because we have, well, I don't know about you, but our family has the March Madness final game tonight we've got to get to, so, it's a big deal in our house of basketball boys, so this meeting is adjourned.